I call the Lycett County Board of Supervisors' September meeting to order. Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the people with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
The Lancaster County Board of Supervisors adopted the following certification resolution. Whereas the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors convened in a closed meeting on September 30th, 2021, pursuit to an affirmative rec- recorded vote on the motion to close the meeting to discuss personnel, legal matters, and acquisition disposition of disposition of real property in accordance with section paragraph two point two dash thirty seven eleven dot A dot one, two point two dash thirty seven eleven dot A dot eight, and two point two dash thirty seven eleven dot A dot three of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section paragraph two point two dash thirty seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under under the Virginia Freedom Information Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting to which this certification applies. And number two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. Before vote is taken on this resolution, is there any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of number one and number two above? If so, identify yourself and state the substance of the matter and why in your judgment it was a departure. Hearing no statement, I call the question. Mr. Palin, I certify. Mr. Bellows?
I certify.
Mr. Lee?
I certify.
Mr. Larson?
I certify.
Dr. Westbrook?
I certify.
This resolution or is certification resolution is adopted. Okay, we're going to the public input session, and each person has three minutes to speak. You you can sell out in three minutes. And when you when you have one minute left, I will hold this sign up notifying you that there's one minute left. And then you could cl- uh bring your summarize your statements and bring them to a close. And we have a list here. Ms. Vernon, Mark, Mr. Vernon, Mark Vernon. First of all, let me say this. During the public session, what you were going to be talking about, anything that is not presently on this agenda for tonight. If it's on this agenda for night, you wait. Okay, yes, sir.
Quick question, Mr. Palin.
Yes, sir.
My son-in-law, John Crookshank, an actual resident in the community, was going to speak tonight. My daughter had to be taken to the hospital, so that took precedent. He sent me his notes. Is it okay if I read them? Otherwise, I can just hand out a copy to you.
Now, you can read them, sir.
Thank you for that.
May I ask, is your microphone on?
It's on. You might have to hit a little.
Okay. My name is Mark Vernon. I've been a veterinarian for forty-one years. My first eight years out of school, I was involved in mixed animal practice. I worked with pig farmers, large and small, during those eight years. I have a small financial interest in my daughter and son-in-law's property on Iberus Road and a large emotional interest in their success and good health. First, I want to give you a quote from the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. "Virginia is on the front lines of the northward spread of feral hogs in the eastern United States, and once established, they are nearly impossible to eradicate. I'm here tonight to try to influence you all on two things. First, loose-running pigs are dangerous to you in many ways. When in search of food, pigs will eat almost anything: roots and tubers, worms, small reptiles, rodents, eggs of turtles, turkeys, pheasant, quail, fruits, nuts, and seeds of trees, thereby competing with deer, turkey, bear, and and small mammals. They wreak havoc on the local environment and pollute your waterways and water sources. They reduce, sometimes eliminate, populations of more favorable animal species and plants, and allow invasive, less beneficial ones to thrive. They may carry diseases dangerous to you, your pets, and your livestock. Think rabies, intestinal parasites like coxidia and roundworms, brucellosis, leptospirosis, salmonella, E. coli, hepatitis E. There are more. These are just the most numerous ones reported. Successful pig producers go to great lengths to confine their pigs to safe environments, work diligently to keep that environment clean and sanitized, vaccinate against important diseases, neuter the majority of young piglets, and remove potentially dangerous eye teeth that grow into tusks over time. They limit male pigs' exposure to females and control the number of breedings. None of this is going on on Ms. Jan Baylor's property, nor is it going to. The second thing I'd like to influence you about is that your county administration and officials are not doing much to protect you from this impending threat. Indeed, they don't even acknowledge that it is a threat to be taken seriously. When bringing to the county authorities' attention the problem of free-ranging pigs in neighborhoods on Iberus Road, we were told, we don't like to tell our people how they can live their lives. Another county official looked me in the eye and said, all you care about is yourselves. This divisive attitude and us-versus-them mentality does not serve our community. We all benefit from a positive outcome on this problem. One of our county judges found this Ms. Baylor guilty on eleven misdemeanor charges of allowing her pigs to wander. His answer was to give her another thirty days to put up a fence and recommend that we hire a lawyer. Really? Doesn't anyone see this as the impending disaster it is about to become? I appreciate you listening to me. Now, I have notes from my son-in-law, John. "For more than a decade, county officials have seemed to look the other way when confronted with residents' concerns about a public nuisance on Iberus Road and Bell's Creek that have included more than forty abandoned vehicles and debris piling up on supposed farmland, ten inoperable boats polluting Bell's Creek, between twenty-five and fifty dogs that ran loose and attacked neighbors, and now a growing population of feral hogs now in excess of one hundred that are ranging several miles and leaving extreme damage in their wake." He was to say he wasn't here to pass judgment on how anyone chooses to live their life on their own property, nor here to discuss a petty squabble between neighbors. But he was here to ask again for your help to remove this nuisance before we face even more damage and before it impacts even more residents. We're talking about dire threats to the environment, biodiversity, natural habitats, and treasured wildlife, and health and safety of county residents. As the closest neighbor to the junkyard on on Iberus Road, Bell's Creek, and to these animals' original home, I can tell you and show you that the damage is real and it is severe now. My property is literally being torn to shreds, forest land decimated, and native plants destroyed. With more than a hundred pigs and no management of population growth or containment, this problem is already way beyond a local animal control issue, which is what county officials have deemed it so far. After months of requests to help for address this public nuisance, help for which county leadership is granted express authority to give in Virginia State Code fifteen dot two dash nine hundred, we've been left to deal with this virtually on our own. We've been told our leaders don't have the authority to do any more, besides have animal control issue citations, and that it has to work its way through the court system. The problem here, which our leaders know, is that even though a judge has rendered a guilty verdict, the only possible remedy here is a series of fines. How will fines rid us of these destructive invasive animals? We've also been told by the judge that we should, quote, "feel free to shoot any animals we see on our property ourselves." Besides the logistical challenges of this, I'm left wondering, what about the county's responsibility to uphold and enforce its laws and to protect its citizens? Your time's about to expire. You're just kicking the can down the road. Please don't allow the inaction of the past to continue. Your constituents deserve for our laws to reflect the current realities of our environment and economy, and we deserve for you to be taking these threats to our health and safety seriously to avoid even more disastrous consequences in the future, not for only our neighborhood, but also for all county lands and the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. I I'd like to respond to Mr. Vernon and Mr. Crookshank's call or statements here to the public. We have been working, and the county administrator and other officials here have been working on this particular problem that exists in the community. And I've been out there to the site a couple of times myself to observe things and to visit homes. But at the time that day, I went and one was present. But we we I've talked with some by email and so on. So we are doing things. We, and I'll say this, this is me speaking. I'm speaking for myself. We just can't trample over other people's rights. Even though there are things that are going on, there are there are laws and things and ordinances that are put in prey put place to handle those. And sometime, it takes time to get things corrected. I mean, if if something happens out here and and it's a person goes to jail, sometimes they come out and they get out of jail, but they still got the problem they got to fight. That 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 may take two or three cases to be heard before it's resolved. And that's the same thing here. I mean, we don't want to go out there and just say you 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 take the lady's pigs and haul them off somewhere and sell them, and then give her the proceeds from it and take out the expenses and say that's here, here, we don't solve the problem. Or we don't go out there and just take our guns and start shooting them because they're not enclosed. That not going to solve the problem as the way it should be. All right. So we are acting on it. It may not be moving as fast as you would like to see it moved. When I went out there one time, I saw that she had, after she came from the court, she had purchased some wire. It was laying at the gate site in some post. I came back out later, and the wire was gone. I saw some of it had been put up. I saw that where she had put down around the bottom of the fence, some four-by-fours to help hold it down and keep them from rooting. And we all know if anybody had any pigs that they raised or work on a pig farm, we know from time to time, I don't care what you do, a pig's gonna get out because he likes to root. Now, you get them back in, and you don't want them to stay out there running all the time because you got an investment that you don't want to go. So we all working on it. We all working on it. So, it was another point I was thinking about.
Well, I'd just like to add, Mr. Palin, if I may.
Yes.
Section ten dash three of Lancaster County Code of Ordinances deals with animals running at large on the public highway. And every time that our animal control officers have seen those animals running at large on the public highway, those animals, that animal's owner has been cited. And this case is currently in general district court where it is being adjudicated now.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, thank you. I just want to let you know, we are working on it. I mean, we're not gonna solve the problem like you really want. And maybe I would be the same way in your shoes if I was living beside it. I want it handled right now. You know, take care of it tonight. But it takes some time, so. All right, next one is Jamie Cockrell. Okay. You can give them to me. I'll hand them all down.
Okay, well, there's just a few explanations.
Oh, okay.
This is the proposed map of the solar project, but it's always wetlands map.
Which solar project? You're talking about the one?
The Waller Solar and Skim, which is where I live.
All right.
So, this is a wetlands map that actually shows the wetlands that are gonna be affected. And then these are two additional maps of the county in that area where you can see all the streams and branches and the, I only have one copy of some of this, and the terrain as well, which is very hilly. And then this basically is their little rigid shapes of where the solar is actually gonna go. And we have one copy of that.
Well, why don't you talk, and then we can make copies of this from here.
And then this is the full Chesapeake Bay watershed. Okay, so. Oh, sorry. Thank you. All right, so specifically on the map where you can see, their map showed their regions where they're gonna build, all covered in green, and you could not see where the actual streams were. And when you look at the, where I overlay what they have with an actual wetlands map, you can see where all the wetlands are. So, their proposal is absolutely impossible to put those solar panels in between those streams and not cause any damage. So, unfortunately, they weren't able to get any farmland or flatland to do what they have to do. But there's hills in those woods, and you go behind our property or into the woods of our property, and you go straight down, and there's streams at the bottom, and then you go straight up. So, I don't know how much they think they can do on flatland because there isn't any. All right? They say they can convert forest land to farmland. That just means they're gonna fill in wetlands. They're gonna level the trees. They're gonna cause erosion. They're gonna put harmful chemicals and herbicides to kill the natural plant life that is essential to the ecosystem. And there's gonna be hydraulic fuels, oils, coolants, all kinds of things that are gonna get in and contaminate the water. All right? They're just throwing down tons of money, and you know this is a multi-multi-million dollar replenishing back to them. All right? If you don't know, wetlands are the marshes, fens, bogs, swamps. It's everything. It's the land in between them, and it specifically prevents flooding, which we just had flooding down here on the road that required the bridge to be repaired. Well, that was during a hurricane. But if they block up all that up by us, then there's more flooding bound to happen. All right? They say they're gonna plant this low-growing grass. Well, that's not the natural grass. It's not supposed to be there. All right? We have little to gain and a lot to lose by going forward with this project. Their four permanent jobs is nothing. All right? And they're just gonna ruin our land. And the first responders are gonna be in danger if there's ever a fire. You're supposed to have an environmental codes compliance officer. That position's vacant in the county right now. Our daughter is a compliance officer in one of those counties on that, on the watershed map. She is part of a team. Every county's supposed to have a team that protects the Chesapeake Bay watershed. She learned from kindergarten to twelfth grade about the Chesapeake Bay, and how to protect it, and how to keep it, how to respect it. Your wetlands board says that they don't address this because it's not rivers and bays. Well, the entire side of Route Three, this side, is flowing into the Carrotomen. The other side of Route Three flows to the Rappahannock. So, the wetlands board has no jurisdiction. I don't understand why. You have, where's your expertise? Where's your environmentalist helping us in Lancaster? They bring in an environmentalist. He didn't do any talking. He, the other guys did all the talking. They're from Texas. What do they care about our bay? They don't. They're just trying to make money. The Virginia policy says that there is, but any potential damage to the wetlands, we need to recognize the irreplaceable value and man's dependence on the wetlands. We have to preserve and protect them from damaging misuses. This is a misuse if I've ever seen one. Protect wetlands from adverse filling practices, siltation, toxic materials. This is all in the Virginia code.
Okay, wrap it up.
The federal level has the two thousand twenty Americans Conservation Enhancement Act, which is a partnership between six states, the federal government, and the District of Columbia. And we're all supposed to do our part. Everybody. Everybody participates. All right? It does not say all except Lancaster County. "The monetary benefits are not worth all the other costs." This is a minute out of this whole big mess. And we have no right to make decisions that have implications down the road for years. There, to say no, there will not be any environmental consequences is irresponsible.
Ma'am, your time has expired, and thank you very much.
I'm done. Thank you, sir.
All right. I gave you extra. Thanks. I say I gave you extra time.
Thank you so much.
All right, all right, okay. Becky Vernon. Ms. Becky Vernon.
I've been a resident of Virginia for more than thirty years, and I came to love Lancaster County when my daughter and son-in-law invited us to their home on Iberus Road. Traveling these country roads brought back fond memories. My family has farmed in Indiana and Ohio for generations. I was raised on a working farm. In the family, for nearly a hundred years, cattle, pigs, chickens, goats, and draft horses, we had them. We also worked the land. Farmers I knew did everything possible to protect their farmland as well as their livestock. It is a foreign concept to me to see livestock freely roaming as they are here. Seeing the destruction and continual danger of pigs on our road, I began to reach out to local state and federal offices, both to educate myself and to solicit aid to address the free-roaming pigs, along with a number of other infractions on the property. I thought for sure that county and elected leaders would be eager to help, but with each phone call, each email, I was met with either resistance or denial. I started with animal control, who was aware of the issue, working it, but also hamstrung by county protocol. He said, he suggested I speak to his boss, the county administrator. He also informed me that all animal control could do is issue citations when they witnessed pigs in the road. These citations are, to date, the only actions the county has taken on this matter. I then reached out to the county administrator, Mr. Gill, by phone and email. No response. I called the sheriff's office. They sent me back to animal control, saying they don't have jurisdiction over animals' issues. I spoke with Brian Barnes, director of planning and use, and a swine producer since age thirteen. He was very well aware of the issue on Iberus and added to my knowledge base. I then began outreach to the county board of supervisors. Again, received no response. I contacted the county health department, the department of social services, Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources, the Virginia State Board of Veterinary Medicine, Virginia Marine Sources, Chesapeake Legal Resource, and the USDA. All are willing to help, but they circled back to the county because of the fence outlaw. The solution must start with the county officials. So, back to the county I went. Eventually, I met with Mr. Gill, and he, and I asked him to present to the board the fence regulation allowing outside agencies to help us. He said, "My board won't vote for that." He couldn't endorse a regulation he believed would harm the farming community. Not sure how that would hurt the farmers. What farmer wouldn't already want to keep the animals safe that makes, this makes no sense? With each day, I'm left with a heightened sense of urgency. I now have constant fear for the health, safety, and environmental well-being of our community. Inertia by our county officials is allowing the pigs to continue to rape the land and leaving us all vulnerable, including the farm community. So, I ask, when is the board going to decide that the buck stops with you and take action?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Next one, Mr. Costello.
Charlie Costello, District Two. Forty-five years ago today, I took off my green suit and retired. Went to work the next day for the civil service for fourteen years. Then we came down here for thirty, thirty-one years we've been here. This place is a treasure. It's been a treasure. It is shortly going to change and no longer be a treasure. People are going to be moving out. People are selling their houses now and moving out rather than have things as it's gonna be. And where it started is here. We didn't take time to do the comprehensive plans as we should have when things like this could have been discussed and worked on, and how much, and where are, and so forth. And I fear it's too late. Jason, we fought the battle. We won the battle of no towers. We're losing the war to Dominion. They're gonna be pervasive all the way through, from owning the land and the things. I see where they're showing up in various places, sponsoring things and so forth. And I fear it's gonna be a disaster in the long run. I'm gonna be here, and I'm not retiring.
You're talking about solar, right?
I'm talking about solar. Yes, sir. I'm talking about solar. And I'll be back again. I'm not retiring again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ernest?
Yes.
Go back to the five minutes and give people time enough to talk. It's the way we've been doing it for twenty-five, thirty years since I've been here. Get back to where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Weekly, Robert Weekly.
Yes, thank you. I'll discuss a little bit of the same problem, but from a perspective of a longer-term landowner and inhabitant of that area, about this ongoing threat to our public health in Lancaster County. Now, over thirty years ago, so I didn't just, I'm not just a come here. My wife Elaine and I decided to move out of big-city life, and we spent a year looking at locations in Virginia and Maryland and all around. We chose Lancaster County as our forever home. Beautiful, pristine Bell's Creek and its neighborhood were perfect. We used our life savings to build a home here. When our long-term neighbors, Ralph and Joan Baylor, passed away, the land passed to a daughter, and changes were abrupt. Ralph and Joan had cared for their home and land. Now, their Civil War-era home became a home for dogs. Baylor waterfront became, accumulated a large number of unregistered derelict boats. I think the number is about ten now. The Baylor property became a junkyard for some forty cars and trucks in clear violation of county ordinances. Some trucks now have trees growing out of them. We complained to the owner. We spoke and wrote to county authorities about the cars, trucks, and boats. The county did not act. The owner brought horses onto the inadequately fenced property, and sometimes those horses wandered out of the pasture and onto the highway. But now, a more serious problem for the county has been created. The owner introduced pigs onto the property. The pig population is multiplying exponentially and spreading. Now, some hundred and fifty to two hundred pigs are occupying other private properties along the Carrotomen River, Bell's Creek, and beyond, leaving environmental destruction in their wake. The expanding pig population is out of control. The owner was ordered by county court to put them in enclosure. But now, the pig population is out of control. It's impossible. They're all over, they're all over many properties. And with pig populations and families now infesting forested areas and ravines along the waterways and the wetlands, there is no feasible way to trap and pin this expanding number of feral pigs. They're going at an increasing rate. The only solution is for these, those pigs to be exterminated now. And due to the failure by county to act earlier, the problem is gonna get worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask a question. I keep hearing a number, a hundred pigs. You just stated a hundred and fifty to two hundred pigs. How do you know that's the number there? Because when I've been out there, I'm not saying that there's not that many, but I don't see that many when I see them. How do we know? Yes, sir.
Mr. Palin, I personally counted seventy-two pigs during a feeding in July.
Okay.
Knowing the weight that...
We need to hand the microphone.
You got the handheld?
Jan was feeding pigs on the road and partially in the enclosure. While she and my wife had a discussion, I counted all of the pigs that I could see. There were seventy-two in July. We've seen numerous new litters since then. I estimated there must be over a hundred by now, and I'm sure that Mr. Weekly is doing the same kind of a thing.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Rustnik, Chuck, Chuck you. Mr. Rustnik?
Good evening. Chuck Rustnack. I live at one ninety-seven Bald Eagle Drive. And I'm just here to support the neighbors on Iberus Road because my community's almost two miles away from their location, and those pigs are ridden in our neighborhood.
Oh, really?
Pardon me?
I said, they have. Okay, because I grew up in your neighborhood too.
We have pictures of them.
Okay.
And we have many people that walk and run, and they're very concerned about their safety. So, I just want you to know, it is spreading all through the county, all through the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
All right, and the last one I have up here is Mrs. Kingsley. Is that right, Kingsley?
Good evening, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I live in thirteen sixty-one Iberus. Jan's farm is probably a quarter of a mile, maybe a little more than that, from my house. My house is back in the woods. You can't really see it from the road. In the spring of this year, I opened the blinds in my bedroom, which is in the back of the house, and encountered between sixteen and eighteen pigs in my backyard. The last time I had seen a pig... The last time I had seen a pig was in twenty-fourteen. I moved here in twenty-thirteen. In twenty-fourteen, I was walking my dog down Iberus, and I walked all the way down to the end and started to turn back, and as I crested the hill before I got to her farm, in the distance, I saw this gigantic animal, and it looked like a big pig to me. And I had just read an article about an escalating problem of feral pigs in Virginia coming from West Virginia and North Carolina. And I'm like, I got my dog, and I'm like, oh, my God, that's a feral pig, you know. Anyway, I was able to go to another neighbor and wait, and then I continued walking home. Since my visit with the sixteen to eighteen pigs in my backyard, I have consistently seen a big female sow who I have named Gertrude, I call her Gertie, by my property, on my property. This pig has dug up the trenches, the trenches on the side of the road, the ditches on the side of the road, from Jan's property all the way up to my house. Now, my immediate neighbor is not there all the time. I have pictures of pigs in his driveway, more than one. There's usually the big sow, and then maybe a couple of, I would say, young adults, and then usually some smaller piglets running around. And apparently, for a while, they've been living in the right-of-way. This, I don't even know what to say to you people. If you think this is just hunky-dory and, oh, she just needs more time, those pigs are not going anywhere. I don't want them on my property. I don't want my dog going ballistic over finding a pig in the yard. And it's time to do something. I understand a hundred years ago, the fence-out deal, this was before us come here, came here for the weather and the water and as a retirement place. But things change. Life changes. Communities change. And that fence-out law has to be amended. In a situation like this, where you have uncontrolled breeding of pigs that are loose, on my way home today, I drove past the farm, there were, I would say, eight, ten, to twelve pigs that were loose in the roadway, crossing back and forth on the farm side where the house is and on the pasture side. So what can I say? We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that's not on the list that wants to speak during this public process?
Good evening. Jimmy Carter, District Five. I just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates. So as you know, we had the joint work session with the Business Advisory Committee. Just wanted to let you know, we're meeting again on October the twentieth to build upon that meeting, and we appreciate you all's cooperation in meeting with us. Second thing is, a triway trail, as you know, under the memorandum of understanding, our committee is working on your behalf on the trail. Just to let you know, we have engaged a national consultant, LPDA, out of Charlottesville. They'll be here on October nineteenth and twentieth for site visit. Mr. Barnes is gonna be meeting with them representing the county. And I think the trail effort's going extremely well. What we're trying to do from them, we're looking to them to help us package things for a federal funding campaign, which we hope to do by the end of the year. But just to give you an update, that's all working very well. And the third thing is on the hospital, as you know, we're doing a fifteen-million-dollar renovation of the hospital. We're now gonna increase that. We're gonna also include fixing the cancer center and expanding that. We're looking into that now. And, and the, the construction of the hospital was the, we had to build the lobby and the new cafeteria before we could move the ER into the new space. The, we're now scheduled to have the lobby and the cafeteria opened in early February, and then we can start full bore on the ER. In terms of COVID response, the hospital is seeing a tick up in COVID, but it's manageable at this point. We have plenty of supplies, and we feel like we're well-prepared. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yep. Somebody online. All right. Online, okay. Somebody wanna speak online? It's your time. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Sorry, I can't be there in person. My name is Abby Crookshank. I've corresponded with you quite a bit, Mr. Palin.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to ask, following up on the remarks that you made in, in response to my husband and my, and my father's remarks, you, you said you were working the issue, and I just wanted to ask to clarify, besides the citations that Mr. Gill mentioned, which we've established are only gonna result in fines from the county, fines which aren't actually ultimately gonna solve our problem, I'd love to know what you guys are doing to work the issue. I haven't received a return phone call you, from you yet. I haven't received anything back from my invitation to walk you through my property. And so I'm just wondering if you can update us on what your actions are.
Okay, thank you. I have walked through your property. You weren't at home at the time. And as far as updates, I emailed you what we have done and what we're intending to do or in the process of doing. And, and like I said in the beginning, those things take time. And when you start talking about changing the fence-out law to the fence-in law, that's still gonna go to the courts. It's still gonna involve time process, and then you're gonna end up, the other owners or owner of animals in this, in this county, then you end up trying to find them every time they get out of a thing, that they are responsible, and get their animals back in. What we have already on the books are working. It may not work as fast as you like for it to work, but it's working.
Oh, my understanding of the county ordinance is that it does not require the court system, but it requires a change in ordinance, and the Board of Supervisors is in charge of changing the ordinance. Do I, do I understand?
You're exactly correct. You're correct. And we have a gentleman, I'm gonna let, Mr., yes, sir, come on up and speak. I usually don't do this during public hearing where we have a back-and-forth conversation. We usually put this on the agenda and handle that, but I'm gonna allow it this time. Yes, sir.
William Farrell, District Two. Let's let everybody understand, county level is civil process. This went to state court that is above the county. Let the state do what they need to do, and then if they're not happy with that, come back to us, and we can advise them further.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Crookshank?
Yeah, I, I've, we have been told by the judge in that, in that process, that all is, that is in his power to do is issue citations. So when we return to the hearing on October sixth this week, that you guys keep telling me, be patient for that, be patient for that, the only possible outcome is that he will issue her fines. And I'm still left wondering, how are fines going to save, solve this problem?
Well, let's let the courts work its, let's let it work its way out. So we can do that. All right? Okay, thank you. You got someone else, Glenn? Anyone else? Okay, that's it. Anyone else here that wants to speak? Anybody else online that wants to speak? Okay, at this point in time, we're closing the public hearing session, or the public input session. And thank you for your, for your comments, and thank you for your input. And don't think they're not being heard. They are. And don't think they're not being considered. They are. Don't think we're not doing anything. We are. I mean, I know, I understand. If you go to the, like I said, if somebody did something, it was fine for it, went to court and gotta have it, and you're going through the court process, doesn't that take time? And then even if they come out with a verdict, somebody might appeal that, doesn't that take some more time? It doesn't happen overnight.
What are you gonna do with five-year pigs?
All right, let's let it work through the system, all right? Okay. I understand what you're saying, I really do. All right. All right, let's move on. Any old business?
Mr. Palin, I'd like to put this in under old business. You know, during July and August, Lancaster County was without a building official. Our previous building official resigned and went to work for another county, and we relied on local counties, adjacent counties, to help us out with plan review, and our former building inspector to help us out with building inspections two days a week. So we got through. And I want to introduce tonight James Cantor, Jim Cantor, just to put a name to a face. This is Lancaster County's new building official. He started August the thirtieth, and he's doing a great job for us so far, so I'd just like for you all to meet him, put a name to a face.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir, and welcome aboard. Looking forward to working with you. Okay. Okay. The Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT.
Mr. Chairman, David Beal told me earlier this week that both he and Mike Bryan had conflicts with tonight's meeting. They did put forth a written report for you, and he did inform me earlier this week about the additional litter pickup that the board had been inquiring about, and we're trying to make that process as simple as possible. And so the plan right now would be for VDOT to, to pay for that pickup in February or March, whichever you all decide is the correct time, and then the county would reimburse VDOT for that. And it would just simply take a motion on the board's part to, to make that happen.
All right. So that wasn't a timing issue?
Yeah, that, that can, and that doesn't have to be done tonight. That can be done, you know, anytime before the litter pickup.
All right, okay.
Was there anything that you all had?
I might have to start timing the county administrator.
Was there anything that you all had for me to pass on to VDOT?
I don't have anything.
I'll talk to him directly. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Presentations. Broadband Authority update. Anybody here from broadband?
Well, Gary's name was on the agenda, and I thought he was gonna be here, but I don't see him. So, but again, you do have a written report in, in your book, and if there's any comments that you want me to relay, I can do it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to comment about the smart polls that are referenced in there and the fact that at the end of the year, they're no longer funded under CARES money. And if it were to continue, the county would need to do that. I believe that they serve a real need, and I think they're a good thing, but it's subject to two stipulations, I guess I should say. The first one is, I need to know if they're really being used. I'm not sure they are. I tend to go by all three that are in my district on a weekly basis, and I've yet to encounter anybody else besides me going down there and checking them out or being there at the time using them. So if there's any way we can get some kind of statistics back as to the type of use, that would be helpful in our decision, I think, as to what we do next year. The second thing is that I've found that there's an inordinate amount of times that those things are down, especially the one that, on Thomas Landing, our public access facility. That one there never seems to be up. The, up at Nutsville, the Collection Point, the one that's there, it's kinda hit or miss. It's generally up, but it's frequently been down. The one that seems to be the most consistent, but even it has been down at times, is the one at Cortoman Baptist. Interestingly enough, our area up there was out of Wi-Fi. Those of us who are customers of a certain company, which most everybody is in my area, we were out the whole day. So my wife drove up there, and she played her online bridge there at Cortoman Baptist, so it got some use today. And she reported back, it was very fast, much faster than it normally is. So those are a good thing. But the point I'm trying to make is that before we make a decision on continuing those, let's, let's find out how well they're used, number one, and let's get on top of these, this downtime, because that can be very frustrating, I think, when you go there and, and you can't get a signal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take one, one other thing to, to add on to. How much is it gonna cost us?
Well, it could be significantly less than the original cost under CARES if BTS can get a reliable signal to those polls. And I will tell you, Mr. Larson, the data does exist for usage, and we can, I can relay that to the broadband authority that you all would like to see that.
Okay.
And the issue about the polls being out is being worked. It's really being brought to the forefront now. We've had a couple of meetings with, with the vendor, and they're, they're working on it. The problem is getting signal to the polls. And they've used AT&amp;T SIM cards, they've used Verizon, they've used T-Mobile. And it's just a matter of picking the best one for whichever, whichever poll. So, but it is being worked on.
Thank you.
All right, good. All right. Mr. Gill is the person for presentational swine management here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Palin, at the request of some Iberus Road residents, we, we have Mr. Todd Engelmeier here from the Department of Wildlife Resources, and he, he's gonna make a presentation on swine management. And Glenn, if you can put me over to PC two, I can get it up on the screen. You can come on over, Todd, and, and would you be more comfortable with the handheld, or do you want?
The mic, this mic's fine. I might move it over here, if that's okay, just to get out of the way of everybody behind me. Might need to dim it a little more. Or dim the light.
I've only got, I've only got an on and off on these.
Hopefully, nobody's afraid of the dark, right? There we go.
Is that, is that okay, chairman?
Yes, sir. Well, I wanted to take just a moment to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board for the invitation to come out on behalf of the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources to talk to you about Virginia swine management. Let's see here, I'm trying to figure out the best way to toggle forward. Maybe I'll say next.
Yeah, there you go.
So a little bit on swine history. Hogs showed up in the United States in the fifteen hundreds by the Spanish. Since then, the colonists, you know, used, used hogs and bred hogs, and the populations expanded rapidly. And the reason that they expand rapidly is because pigs become reproductive at six to eight months of age. And their litters are four to twelve piglets a year with two, two litters at that. So the best way, another colleague of mine put it, is they have lots of babies twice a year, and those babies have babies once a year. So in terms of reproductive potential, they're one of the highest reproductive animals next to the rodent family, as you could find, which makes them perfect examples of an invasive species in that they have that high reproductive potential. Next, please. So what are swine and what is feral? So swine are pigs or hogs, and the definition, I've heard it said many times a night that they're feral. And actually, the definition of feral swine in Virginia are hogs that have no owner. And so when somebody claims ownership, they're technically, legally not feral. In, in the world of feral animals and in hogs, the color of it doesn't matter. The, they, domestic animals that are released and into the wild and become more wild and/or feral, they tend to grow tusks, their tail goes from curled to straight, they lose their white, they can turn black, their, their hair becomes longer and coarse, they start to take on a European hog look, which, you know, is the famous razorback. Although they're more rare in, in the wildlands of Virginia, we do have European populations here and there, and, but most of the hogs that we see on our domestic landscape are Asian descent. But they transition to wild populations very quickly, and they can do that in just a few generations. So just a couple of years, they can act like wild animals. Next, please. So, and I've heard everybody talk about tonight, defense laws, and this is no history lesson to the board, obviously, but to members of the public that are here. Before sixteen forty-three, Virginia was English common law, and that was that, that property owners were required to fence in their livestock. After sixteen forty-three, Virginia law went to general law, which allowed, which was a fence-out, meaning if you didn't want domestic stock on your land, you would just simply fence it out. And then after sixteen, eighteen sixty-two, we went back to English common law, but they gave the responsibility up to the county officials. The map that you see on the left-hand side of the slide is the counties that are fenced in, the light blue, I'm kinda colorblind, so it looks light blue to me. And then the brown is the fence-out counties. And you can see that it's about a 50-50 split in Virginia, and it's been that way for quite some time. We also define a fence. And there's a legal definition of fence, how high it is, what it's constructed of, and what it looks like. Next, please. So the general facts about swine management in Virginia is that, as it was mentioned earlier by someone, that Virginia is the front line to feral hog management in the country. We're just seeing populations in the last 10 to 15 years in Virginia. Feral hogs are detrimental to native habitats, endangered species, and native plants and animal species. And they're nearly impossible to eradicate. And I can give you many examples, because I've been personally involved in eradication efforts and how much money and time it takes to do it. Adult feral hogs and/or just hogs in general have no natural predators other than human beings. And that's the adults, anyway. And then they exhibit the very high reproductive potential, as I mentioned. A population can triple in size in 14 to 16 months, so just a little over a year. It can triple. Seventy percent of a population has to be removed every year just to stabilize it, to keep it where it's at. That's a lot of animals in most perspectives. Next slide, please. And why we care. So feral hogs are a risk to Virginia's natural wildlife resources. They are the worst invasive species in the world. They're, they are known to have played a role in the decline of 300 native plants and animals. Over 250 of those are threatened and endangered. Feral swine are, impact our native species, they do it through direct predation and while altering the ecosystem, which is an indirect effect. And they do that because of their destructive nature. They, the way they forage, the way they trample, and the way they wallow. So it's a very unique behavior that you don't see in a lot of other animals. Next, please. The direct impacts are opportunistic, and they eat just about everything. And that includes from nests, to eggs, to reptiles and amphibians, to nests like quail and turkey, small vertebrates, anything that's close to the ground or that's on the ground is fair game. They tear up grasses and shrubs and seedlings, and they kill very sensitive plants without even thinking about it, the way they root. Feral swine are, they compete with our native species on many key resources. And the way they do it is they have an incredible sense of smell. They have the ability to, they use them in tuber location, to dig up tubers for truffles and things like that, it could be six to eight feet in the ground. So they have the ability to detect their food resources deep into the soils, and that's where they go to get them. Their tenacious feeding behaviors, they have a high demand for energy, they're not adapted to Virginia's cold weather, so they require a lot of resources to survive, and they are more than able to get them. They have the ability to digest all of those things mentioned above. So they're, when I say omnivore, I mean at its highest level. They consume fruits and nuts and berries for all the foods and resources that our native wildlife depend on and that our species depend on for reproduction, that all their, and Virginians use as recreation and/or just, you know, watching. Feral swine are aggressive, and they chase off other species, which is sort of more in the indirect family, meaning that other species don't coexist with them. Next, please. The indirect impacts are that they change the environment. I've done a lot of work down in Back Bay and Virginia Beach, when they used to have feral hogs. We've eradicated all of those animals. It took us almost 15 years. And this was a huge effort on our part and the USDA. When we started there, there was hardly any vegetation. It looked like a big hog pit over thousands of acres. I went back there about two weeks ago, and the environment is completely different. It's regenerated. You see the animal wildlife species that weren't there before that are now there. And so there is hope at the end of the tunnel. But they do damage the environment by changing the habitat. They spread invasive plant species because they disturb the soils. So like Fragmites, that everyone hates, that plant survives and disturbed wetland soils. If you went down to Back Bay, you would still see the repercussions of the pigs being there, because they turn the soils over where the native plants lose and the invasive, non-native plants win. And you talk about expenses to get rid of that plant, it's astronomical. So, and for years that it takes to get rid of it. They alter water quality and cause erosion, so that's another concern to the Chesapeake Bay, obviously. Feral swine carry with 30 pathogens and 40 parasites that infect other wildlife. Next, please. Why we care. It's a huge risk to our health and commercial pork industry. They harbor many diseases, including, as mentioned up above, swine brucellosis, pseudorabies, Trichinella, Trachycephalosomiasis. And they transmit some of these to humans, livestock, other livestock, pets and wildlife. And so that's a concern when a population is not managed. So just, I wanted to highlight just a few. The swine brucellosis is a bacteria that humans can get, dogs can get it, and swine can get it. It's transmitted through breeding mostly, but also ingestion. When humans get it, they sort of get a flu symptom, and they treat it with antibiotics. When dogs get it, there's no treatment. It's normally the animals are euthanized to prevent the spread. And so where we get really concerned about brucellosis with dogs is because we also have dog hunting, deer hunting in Lancaster County. And if brucellosis were to show up, you could see it spread into the dog community. So the other concern about brucellosis in the swine business is it shows false positives in the cattle industry for bovine brucellosis. If that happens, you have to quarantine your entire cattle herd, which is a huge economic loss. Next, please. Pseudorabies is a herpes virus, and it's not actually kin to rabies at all. But it's spread through nose to nose, which means it transmits very quickly, and also in ingestion and inhalation. It creates a fever, for the most part. Cattle can get it, dogs can get it, cats can get it. So it's very contagious. The endpoint is 100% fatal. There's no treatment for pseudorabies. But it's not contagious to humans, thank God. We have enough herpes virus in the human population. So the tularemia is another one. People call it rabbit fever. That one is passed on through infected meat or ticks, and we all have enough with ticks as it is. The human population can contract tularemia. I've actually had a friend who contracted it. I can't even imagine going through that. But the result of it is pneumonia, blood infections, and meningitis. Next, please. So why we care. Feral hogs also cause extensive crop damage, the threats to livestock, damage to farm equipment through rooting of fields, tearing up fences and pasture. If you look at the middle picture, this one was incredible. This was from Culpeper, Virginia. And you could see the root marks of a feral pig that went down a newly planted cornfield and literally walked right down that rows and ate the new corn that was coming up. So they have the tremendous potential to damage crops. And you could see the rooting that they've done in that pasture on the right, and then the corn damage from standing corn. Next, please. Why we care. Feral hogs also cause extensive property damage through the rooting of soils and vehicle strikes. That picture on the left-hand side is something I hope we never see in this part of Virginia. I've failed my job. I manage almost 20 counties. Lancaster is my favorite, everybody knows that. And I would hate to see that happen here. Next, please. How we control them. We mostly trap them. It's the most successful way. But when that doesn't work, we end up shooting them, and we have now the authority in Virginia to shoot them from the help, with a helicopter. It's something we want to avoid. Trapping is something we want to avoid, but it is at our disposal. We can do it. We can help. The USDA can help. We have the means, we have the opportunity in most cases, and we have the resources to help. And I want you to take that with you, that if you need help, if this county needs help, we're there to help you. Next, please. This is the report, feral swine brochure, that we put out all over the place, and the phone number that we pass out to the public to report their feral swine sightings and/or damage, so that we can try to help. We had a case in Northumberland County, not far at all from here, for the last four years. We had to trap 60 animals. That effort took over three years to do it, to catch 60. Three years. Eight staff members, over $100,000 in expenses to do 60 animals. That was in Northumberland. We detected pseudorabies in two animals in that population. That population was unknown, therefore not feral. And therefore, we could step in and trap and remove. So you're in a very difficult situation, no question about it, in terms of feral versus non-feral, fence out versus fence in. Any other information you need from us or the USDA, please, please ask. Thank you so much for inviting me, and I say that on behalf of myself and from the Virginia Wildlife Resources.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. And we may be reaching out to you.
Please do.
All right.
Let me ask one question. Are you still monitoring the situation in Northumberland?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's still some sightings, that's why I'm asking.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm familiar with that situation over there, so, yeah.
Okay. So...
You actually had traps last winter?
That's right.
Yeah. So those traps have been ticking up now?
That's right. Had removed all those traps. We felt like that was 100% successful.
Okay. All right.
Oh, sorry. But, yeah, if not, please, please reach out to me. We can follow up and make sure that we are successful. The worst thing you can do in feral pigs is walk away thinking you've completed the effort. Because it, like, you've probably noticed out there, just one animal can lead to a whole nother mess.
Yeah.
But we have a very good idea of where those pigs come from. We have the genetics.
I do, too.
Yeah, we have the genetics of all the feral hogs in the United States, so we can pinpoint where they come from. And so it's pretty amazing, the technologies we have, but trying to figure out the person that brought them is very difficult, so. But thank you, and please reach out to me.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Those hogs that you trap, those hogs that you trap?
Yes.
What is done with them, then? Are you able to, you know, somehow or another process them, or what is done?
No, they're, in most cases, they're incinerated. We test for all of the diseases that are concerned to us, and they're incinerated.
They're destroyed.
Yeah, yeah. The hog industry, the way it's set up, is it's very protective. My family is from Missouri. I'm gonna come here, no doubt, like, but I've lived in Virginia for 40 years, and I've been a biologist for 30 years. But my family in Missouri are hog farmers, so I know it intimately, and I hear all the debates and issues. I know a number of hog farmers in Virginia and how protective they are of that resource, how much money they spend in vaccinations. I spoke to a hog farmer just a few weeks ago that thought he saw a feral hog on his property, and Smithfield Foods sent a sniper to his house to go find that pig. So it's a very serious issue in terms of the disease management.
Now, let's just say you took on the idea of hunting them. Can that meat be consumed safely?
Well, it can. You know, it's just, the problem is, is the, having an unknown population leaves question. And so, like in Back Bay, we had feral hog hunts for, gosh, 20 years, and we never had an issue. When we went down there to study that population about 15 years ago, we took blood samples and looked at every pig that was killed there, and we never found any of those diseases. So fortunately, you know, it was okay. But the bottom line is, you're not 100% certain when you start dealing with a feral population if it has any of those diseases. So you're taking a risk.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments, sir, from the board?
And I would like to add on the hunting issue. We're, as an agency and in general, we're anti-hunting of feral pigs. And the reason that that is, and I described it to a lot of the hunt clubs that live down there in Northumberland, is that if you allow the hunting of pigs, or you endorse the hunting of pigs, it actually encourages people to bring them from other states and release them. So it's a huge disadvantage to even promote it. Because if you do, it's incredible that hunters go, oh, wow, that's something that we could hunt year-round. How fun would that be? In other states that they promoted the hunting of feral pigs, like Texas, it's a feral pig culture. They, I mean, you can go on any channel, outdoor channel, and you'll see people, hunters, in helicopters, shooting feral pigs legally in Texas. It would be the worst thing that ever happened in Virginia to have something like that. So promoting the hunting of feral pigs is a very bad idea.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
So let me just ask, clarify one thing.
Sure.
Because these pigs are owned by a person.
Yes.
They're not feral.
That's correct. Yeah, the legal definition, we have talked about this with the USDA and within our agency, that the greatest thing that ever happened in Virginia would be the change of, feral would change, the definition of feral would change. And that feral would be defined as pigs that have left the property of their owner after a certain number of days, you know? So you get, they have time to recapture them and that sort of thing. And that's normally what happens. Pigs get out, they call the county, they call animal control, animal control gets the USDA and myself, we put traps out, we catch them, we put them back in the pen, end of story. That's the way it normally works in fence-in counties. Even fence-out counties that have pigs that are out of the fence, that the property owners want them back, we help. So, but it's, but they're not, they don't, they're, the feral definition that allows us to actually act in a removal method only exists when they're not claimed.
But fence out means that if Mr. Larson has pigs?
Yeah.
And they're running all over the place, and I live next to them?
Right.
To keep those pigs off of my property, I have to fence my property.
Fence it out. That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. So some counties have gone to fence in over time. They've run into situations like this, where they've decided, hey, you know, for whatever reason, we don't have a lot of livestock in our county, or if we do, the, I mean, there's some meeting of the minds to endorse that change, and, you know, it helps protect the public resources.
Well, sure.
But it's, you know, but it's a very contentious thing, obviously. Because there's liabilities.
Would it be a legal question? But I would think you could choose the species that would require the animal owner to fence that species in.
And I don't know the answer to that. I've been asked that before, like, can you be specific to pigs or dogs or whatever? I would think you can, because we're specific about other animals, including dogs and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
But that's just a question I don't know.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, ready to move on? All right.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for the invitation, again.
Have a good evening. Okay, public hearing. Mr. Barnes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next, this public hearing, rather, your only public hearing, is in regards to a request for rezoning, excuse me, from M1 to R1, that's industrial to residential. This is on three adjacent parcels that are all part of the same ownership and are part of the same consideration tonight. This, if you notice in the memo, from my planning commission memo to the memo to you, I have changed the acreage to reflect new information. I'll wait for one moment. The total acreage that the county lists on the GIS reflects sub-aquous bottom or private creek bottom as well. Once we got into the public hearing with the planning commission, newer information was submitted that shows that new surveys show there's around two acres of upland on this, on this request. So that is a lot more limited in scope, especially when you look at the improvements on the parcel. I do want to point that out publicly, because I promised the applicant that I would do that and make a point of that as well, because that's something that is new information that has changed since, since the planning commission consideration. As you all are aware, in your packet, I went ahead and provided you with the minutes from the whole entire planning commission meeting, because they had the hearing for this project and the other rezoning that night, and then they took their votes after hearing both projects. So some of the comments submitted for the other parcel were pertinent for you to see and consider for this. This application comes to you with a vote of four to two, to forward with no recommendation. And if you guys have any questions of me... Um, and if you guys have any questions of me, of the process, or county staff perception, or, or what have you, I'll entertain those at this time.
Gentlemen, before I open it up for public hearing, uh, uh, yeah, you have any questions or comments of Mr. Brian Barnes?
No, no.
Okay. At this time, I'm opening it up for public hearing, you have three minutes. Anybody want to speak? Yes, sir.
So my name is Todd Robertson, I'm the applicant, so I'm not sure if, does the three-minute rule still apply? Come on, sir, all right. Okay. So I, I do have a, a brief PowerPoint that I forwarded, if we can put it up. Okay. But, uh, first of all, thank you for having me, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. I'm here, my name's Todd Robertson, my wife Dana is with me as well. We are from Blacksburg, Virginia, uh, other side of the state, and, uh, I promised my wife about ten years ago that I would get her back to the coast at some point in time when I moved her to the mountains. And so we've been looking for the last, I, I would say, four or five years. And we happened to come to the Irvington area, uh, a little more than a year ago, and we just fell in love with it. There was dolphins out there, we had multiple friends in the area, and we stumbled on this particular property. And, uh, uh, we, we fell in love with it. We were told by the realtor at that point in time that it had been for sale for about ten years. Um, they had, there were some septic challenges, that it had very limited ability to put a septic system on it. So, uh, over the next sixty days or so, uh, we spent some time looking at and going through the contractual-type terms of it, uh, and came to an agreement on price and, and a period of time to study the septic system. And for the next four months, we, we spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, and we, we believe, well, we have a certification, certification letter at this point in time, that, that really resolved our issues there. If you go to the next slide, uh, that's the location of the property. I think you probably are familiar with it, uh, it's the old Morgan Oyster processing facility. Uh, the next slide, uh, the next slide is an overhead view of it. The buildings on the property have, have not had any attention for what appears to be the last fifteen, twenty-plus years. Uh, there's a number of things that are really dilapidated at this point in time. Uh, my wife and I are plant, would like to have the ability to put a home on this property. Uh, a home and a cottage for our, our kids that will one day have grandchildren and come back to, to, to visit, hopefully. Um, the next slide. So the next slide shows the, the zoning that is M1 versus currently R1. And if you'll notice there, uh, in the highlighted area on the right was the latest property that was rezoned to R1, um, that I think had been, uh, used as maybe a yacht club-type facility prior to the rezoning hearing, maybe earlier this year, I believe. The two properties that, that we're referring to are 33192 and 33193. Okay, next slide. As Brian was talking, speaking earlier, uh, I did just want to make sure everyone understood that the par, it's parcel A and parcel B that are the two above, above-water, uh, parcels that, that really add to the acreage, acreages, or acreage, it's just over two and a half acres. And then there's just over seven point eight acres of submerged property that goes with it. Next slide. So just repeats what I just said. And so one of the things that came up in the planning commission, uh, David Jones, who's represented me through this process as well, um, had got a meeting with Tommy Kellum, the Kellum Oysters, and, uh, there was a little concern on his part that, hey, you know, homes start to encroach on his property or the, the, the industry there, and that people would start complaining. So I said, well, Tommy and I talked on multiple occasions, uh, had some really good conversations. And I said, well, so what if we put something in the deed, uh, a declaration in the deed that would say that the owners of this property, because his biggest concern was, well, what if you move in a couple of years, right? Something happens and, and you sell this home. So I said, well, what if we forever put in this deed that no one can ever complain about, uh, any of the work, uh, that's being done in M1 on your properties? So I had an attorney draft up, uh, a, a long declaration. Mr. Kellum was, uh, he, he, he was very appreciative of that, uh, and he ran it by the whole family later that night, and immediately sent me an email saying, hey, we're, we're in full support of this project if you do this declaration. So I reached out to Brian and said, we're more than, what I would like to do is proffer, you know, if we're fortunate enough to get this rezoning completed tonight, is that we would proffer that this would go into the deed to forever put this property aside that can never complain about the oyster industry or any other industries that are under the M1 with the Kellum family. And so I guess, I would, again, just to end, would really respectfully ask that you approve this rezoning. Um, and I'm here for questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else from the public want to comment? Yes, sir, Ms. Carter.
Jimmy Carter, District 5. Um, I've been in the real estate business here probably longer than anybody in the county, and, uh, the over fifty years. And, uh, I'm intimately familiar with this piece of property. Bill Westbrook and I looked at this property numerous times over the last fifteen years, trying to figure out. We always thought it was an attractive piece of property, we tried to figure out uses for it. Um, so the property's been on the market a long time, that's what I want to point out. No one, no one's bought it because it had limited sewer. There's a precedent next door that was set for, 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 like, for, for another rezoning to, to residential from M1. So there is a precedent in the neighborhood. And, uh, I think the time's come to, to put this property into use, and I would just encourage you to vote for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, all right. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eleanor Brown. My husband, Bill, and I are the owners of the residence at 1169 Johns Neck Road, which is one lot over from the Robertson's property, which, to orient you, is next door to the recently rezoned property. Um, we are here to express our support for the rezoning from M1 to R1. The property on the point is currently in a state of significant disrepair and has been neglected and laid fallow for, for many years. As was previously stated, it was on the market a long time. Um, the proposed residential use is consistent with other uses at our end of the neck. There's lots of residences, when you look at that, um, map that Mr. Robertson, uh, showed, uh, you see some still in one designations, but most of those are residences anyway. We are very excited about this potential development of an, of a home at the end of the point there. It's a beautiful spot, and, and, uh, we're excited that the Robertsons want to be good stewards of the land there. Um, Bill and I are both descendants of Oystermen, and we are very supportive of the working waterfront. We enjoy very much, um, the, the working waterfront around us, and we, we don't object to that. We bought our home, which was, is residential, the only residential, if you see in that map, knowing that, because we enjoy the working waterfront, and we love and support our watermen and the watermen in our community. But that land has not been, um, purchased and used in the working waterfront all these years. So I agree with the previous speaker that it's time to put it, put it into use, um, to enhance the tax base. And, um, we urge your support of the rezoning and respectfully request that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Jones?
Good evening.
How you doing?
David Jones, I'm formerly of District 3 and District 5. Uh, I do run a construction company in Whitestone, and so I just wanted to touch Jimmy and Mr. Robertson stole a little bit of thunder that I would have had, uh, with all their comments. But I did want to touch a little bit more on the septic issue, as I brought it up, um, at the planning commission meeting. I have worked with Mr. Robertson and another couple on this property, but that was ten years ago. And, uh, up until recently, we could not get septic on that property. We tried and tried and tried, and it was turned down consistently, uh, by Mr. Fridley here in Lancaster County at the Health Department. And, um, we actually took Mr. Fridley's, uh, rejection and went to the state, what, what they call the Supreme Court of the Health Department, and got turned down there also. So just recently, we received enough septic capacity to do the single-family dwelling, and in no way, uh, uh, we were told that it would be able to handle any kind of a commercial operation down there because of the new, the new rules. So I just wanted to make sure I drove that point home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No one else? Anyone online? If so, raise your hand, so we can recognize you. All right, no one's online, the public hearing is now closed. All right, entertain a motion. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is in my district, and I've witnessed the, uh, the video of the planning commission discussion on this. I read the minutes of the planning commission about this. I've visited the property. Uh, it has been on the market for at least ten years, if not more than that. I move that we approve this rezoning.
All right, the motion has been made. Or, 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 are there any questions or comments concerning that? All, okay? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Motion is passed. All right. Consensus docket.
I move for approval of the consensus docket.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor said aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote, this passed, all right. Consideration, docket, salaries, and invoices.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the invoices, a total of $2,142,637.48, of which of total payroll, $333,569.97, for a total of $2,476,207.45, which include loan, loan payments of $1,118,560.13, capital improvements of $451,560, and cares expenditures of $35,034.79.
Mr. Chairman, before you call the vote, I, I would ask that this, these be continued, because the first time we saw them was tonight in paper form. And I, as you know, I do like to go through them. So I, I would simply ask that, that approval of these be continued till next month, along with that, that month's.
All right, gentlemen, I, that, yeah, I forgot to ask that.
I have no problem with that request to amend approval until next month. To continue review them.
Well, we, we'll continue that.
Yeah, thank you.
There was a couple of extenuating circumstances that caused the lateness of this, so I think that's appropriate.
And, and the person that was responsible that had close things that happened with, in her life, so that's why it was the delay. All right, moving along, all right, uh... Mrs. Hodges?
Chairman Palin, members of the board. Mr. Gale, thank you for this, um, opportunity, I appreciate it as always. I do need to confess... Closer?
Hold on a minute, let people go, people exited. So we can pay attention to you.
I got you.
All right. Okay, you want to start over again?
I do need to say, what I have to say is not nearly as enthralling or captivating as what I've already heard here tonight. Um, it's been very educational in many ways, um, so, um, but, as always, I do appreciate this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Community Services Board. First of all, I want to acknowledge Alice Coats, who has been, um, the board member from Lancaster for many, many years. Um, she's not been just a faithful member, but is, um, carrying the considerable, considerable institutional knowledge of our board. Um, she's very wise, thoughtful, and a deliberate member, and I will sorely miss her as her term ends in December. And she cannot be, she cannot be reappointed. She has served, um, the maximum, so we will need another member from Lancaster County to begin their service January 1st. Um, I'm here to talk tonight about the state performance contract, which, um, has two distinct dimensions. One's the financial component, which is what you've received, and the other is the service component. Um, do you have that in your board packet? Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Um, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the performance contract. But let me, I just want to first summarize a little bit about Lancaster County and the finances with the Community Services Board. Um, as I think you're probably very, very much aware, Lancaster County contributed both in fiscal year 2021 and 2022, $42,224 to, um, the Community Services Board budget. Um, our budget for fiscal year 2022 was slightly over $28.5 billion. Um, your contributions go in great part to the unfunded individuals from Lancaster County. In other words, the people that need to be subsidized because they do not have insurance, and they're on a sliding fee scale. So it goes in some part to help, uh, help offset that cost to us. Um, but I also want to make sure everybody's aware that, that state fund, uh, local funding is supposed to match in ten percent of the total state funding. Um, the total amount from our ten counties is, um, woefully below the ten percent. Um, the, the total amount was, from the ten counties, is $541,095. And our matching funds, um, as you'll see in the performance contract, was six, $668,000, a little less than $669,000. We had to find in-kind contributions to meet that ten percent requirement, such as, um, donation of office space, like at the jails where we work, um, where we've been in the schools, where they donate office space to us. So we don't even, we aren't even able to match, uh, the ten percent requirement with our local donations. So I also want to make sure that you're aware, as a board, um, that, um, the CSB wage impact for Lancaster County was just about a million dollars. Um, to be exact, it was $956,302. In other words, the people that we employ that reside in Ma, in Lancaster County was almost a million dollars. Uh, just a couple updates, um, I won't hold you too much further, or too much longer. Um, as you probably are well aware, we moved our Warsaw Counseling Center back in January from Warsaw, Richmond County, to, over to Essex County. That's been a project that's been in the works for several years, and it's finally coming to, to an end. Uh, moreover, our psycho, psychosocial program that was located in Kilmarnick for well over twenty-five years was also relocated to Tappahannock. Um, and so that's a, a significant change. Charter House has certainly thrived, um, and is providing a community for individuals who have a serious mental illness. Um, and that's not something we talk about publicly very often, but it does impact our community significantly. And I'll take, I'll talk about that another time, um, when there haven't been so many hot topics before me. Um, just a couple other things that you're probably well aware of that we're all struggling with. One is the closure of the five state hospitals that, including Eastern State Hospital. They've now reopened, but for several months, they were closed to accepting any civil admissions from, um, from our area. Um, and, and as well as, like, Western State and Central State are, are two additional ones. And this is meant, the reality of, this is meant, one, it's kept people in the emergency rooms for lengthy, lengthy periods of time awaiting a, a hospital bed. Um, we've had some people wait over a week. People who are psychotic or suicidal, who can't, who have to stay in an, an emergency room with the staff there that have to attend to them. Our law enforcement is tied up with them for that entire time, which is cost of overtime to the local counties. And they're off the roads, quite frankly. And this has been a serious problem for well over two years in our state, but it became more and more acute in the last several months. Um, I mean, today, I got a call from, um, and we have someone who is in floridly psychotic, paranoid, also COVID-positive, sitting in an emergency room. Um, and there's no bed for them, there's, no one wants to take them. I don't know how long they're going to stay in an emergency room, but this is a real problem for our ten counties. And since you have an emergency room here in Lancaster, it is a significant problem. it is a significant problem. Another focus is our Marcus Alert Bill. I don't know if you've heard about that. This is, as you know, a situation where a young man, actually from our 10 counties, who taught at Essex, did have a psychiatric break when they were in Richmond, and then ended up becoming naked, charging at a police officer, and was shot and killed. It's had a lot of attention. And the Marcus Alert Bill is requiring a CSB person, individual, in tandem with law enforcement, to come up with protocols for our 10 counties of how we're going to address crises in the future. If this was one jurisdiction, we might be able to accomplish it. We have 10 jurisdictions that we're going to have to work with, with law enforcement, to try to come up with protocols. No funding on the law enforcement side, no additional funding on the CSB side that we're going to, to move forward on this. It is due back to the Department of Behavioral Health by the end of June. And I think, as we're all struggling with this COVID, we have had to pay an inordinate amount of overtime in our residential programs, because we don't have staff, and so we have to cover them 24/7, and that's cost us an extraordinary amount of money in overtime this past year for individuals who may have a family member residing there who have intellectual or developmental disability. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. There aren't any right now in Lancaster. There was one in Kilmarnock, but we closed that. So with all that said, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them. And also, if you'd be willing to support the resolution approving the performance contract, I would greatly appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Any questions, gentlemen? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Before we vote on the resolution, I'd like to read it. The resolution adopted by the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors, approving a Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Services Board Physical Year 2223 Biennium Performance Contract, whereas Paragraph 37.2-508 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, requires each community service board to submit to the governing body of each political subdivision that established it, a biennial performance contract for community mental health, intellectual disabilities, and substance use services for its approval prior to submission of the contract to the Virginia Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Services. And whereas the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Service Board has put forward its proposed Physical Year 2223 Biennium Performance Contract for approval by the Board of Supervisors of its governing counties of Essex, Gloucester, King and Queen, King Williams, Lancaster, Matthews, Middlesex, North Umland, Richmond, and Westmoreland. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Lancaster County, Virginia, that the Physical Year 2223 Biennium Performance Contract prepared by the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Service Board presented to the Board is hereby approved and may be forwarded to the Virginia Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Services as further required. Gentlemen, you've heard the reading of the resolution. I move that we adopt this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you greatly.
Mr. Gill.
Mr. Chairman, your third consideration item deals with a matter that was first presented to you back in March and April of this year. You'll remember that David Alga and his wife, who owned two adjacent properties next to the new courthouse lot, came to the board and asked if he could acquire a 0.234-acre portion of the county-owned Tax Map 15-80 that abuts his property, so that he could reopen an old driveway that once served his property directly from Courthouse Road, but that old driveway is now on county property. Back in 2012, the county granted the Algas an easement over the courthouse parking lot so that he could use the existing driveway to get to that house. You held your required public hearing on this matter in April. You directed Mr. Alga to have a survey and a deed prepared and bring that back to the board for approval, and he's done that. And you have the draft deed and survey in your package. And I will say that County Attorney Jim Cornwell has reviewed it as he's required to and has approved as to form. And the Algas are here tonight if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Y'all have any comments you want to make? Mr. Alga, you have any comments you want to make?
Yes, sir. I really appreciate the board's consideration.
Come forward to the mic, so we can all hear what you have to say.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mr. Gill, I really appreciate your consideration of our request, and I appreciate all of your support in this and through this process. It has been a lengthy one, but we have been patient folks, and really want to thank you for all that you're doing to help us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
At the time we first started talking about this some time back, there was talk of some consideration in the form of money being given for this piece of property. Is this still a consideration or not?
Well, the consideration is the vacation of that easement across the county-owned property.
Okay, so there is no monetary.
There is no monetary consideration. Now, of course, they have gone to the expense of having the deed prepared.
I appreciate that. I'm asking the question, is all I'm doing. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? At this time, then, I move that we accept this convenance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, okay. Mr. Gill?
Mr. Chairman, your fourth consideration item deals with the abatement of taxes on Tax Map Number 2827 for property that was destroyed by fire on April 16th of 2021. You recall that we've had several of these in the past, not that many, maybe once a year. And the Code of Virginia, Section 58.13222, provides for the abatement of taxes on buildings that have been damaged beyond the control of the owner. The property owner has to make application with the Commissioner of Revenue, which they have done, and the structure has to be rendered uninhabitable by the building official, which that has been done as well. And Commissioner Savoy has certified the amount that you have in your package. When I was doing the memo for this particular item, I went back to the last ones that we did, and was in November of 2020. And I believe it was Mr. Bellows who said, you know, there has to be an easier way to do this. Why can't we pass an ordinance so that the Commissioner of Revenue can certify these on her own without coming to the board for approval? And you've previously indicated that you would support such an ordinance. So Jim and I will get together and bring that forward to you in the coming months.
All right, thank you. You've heard this. Any questions, comments?
I move that we approve it.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor approve and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, okay. Mr. Mulfrin?
Thank you for allowing me to come this evening to speak on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Neck. The Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Neck is seeking to partner with Lancaster County to apply for a Title II grant opportunity that's being presented to us, that's being solicited by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, DCJS typically we call it. And for us to be eligible for this grant, the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors would need to, hopefully would need to agree to be the financial agency for the grant and thus allow the county administrator to sign the final grant documents, along with me, which are due to DCJS no later than the 19th of October. If the grant request is funded through DCJS, then it would entail working with BG CNN and the Department of Criminal Justice Services to allow us to have proper access to complete the grant-related requirements on the DCJS online grant management system. This would allow our organization to complete all necessary administrative tasks required of the grant and to allow Lancaster County Treasurer to be able to request the funds and forward those funds to the Boys and Girls Club. Each quarter, the Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Neck would provide a detailed report to both the county treasurer to ensure that reimbursement requests are within the approved grant documents. And since this is a reimbursement grant, it also has no required matches from Lancaster County beyond what you have been doing, which you're so thankful for at this present time. Now, the project that we're wanting to apply for will target Lancaster County youth and families in need of behavioral and educational support. The programs that we provide, it's DCJS, it's about positive programs to keep kids out of the court system. BG CNN will initiate our project learn curriculum to assist our members, grades first through eighth grade, in improving their academics, while also at the same time developing interpersonal skills and improved decision-making skills. Our teen program, which is the eighth grade through the 12th grade, will participate in our life skills curriculum, which will assist participants with developing cognitive and behavioral competencies to prevent the risks of a variety of unhealthy, risky behaviors that so many kids find themselves getting into. In addition, participants will learn how to manage money and utilizing BG CNN and BGCA Money Matters programming. And we'll also help prepare them for employment using our career launch curriculum and our new college and career achievement center that we have in our new facility. The time period for this grant that's being offered is January 1st, 2022, to June 30th of 2023. With the Board of Supervisors' approval, BG CNN would intend to seek between $100,000 and $125,000. Typically, when we receive grants through Department of Criminal Justice Services, they've been, for a 12-month period, they've been in the $70,000 to $75,000 range. So we're working on the project now, however we wanted to come to you before we put a lot more energy into the grant report itself, since it's due on the 19th. This is an 18-month grant, and again, it has to be submitted and signed by both myself and someone from the jurisdiction by the 19th deadline. To give you a little background on our ability of working with Department of Criminal Justice Services, BG CNN has been a recipient of DCJS funding since 2015. We've been a direct recipient on at least two grants, where we've been the direct funders and finance officers of it. And we've also received a couple of other grants. We've worked with the town of Kilmarnock from 2017 through 2019 with funding, as well as the North Umland Board of Supervisors from '20 and early '21. In the summer of 2021, BG CNN also went through a federal audit with the Department of Criminal Justice Services, as they were going through an audit of all of their grant recipients. And we finished that audit with glowing reviews from both the federal administrators, as well as the department heads that we work with there in Richmond from the Department of Criminal Justice Services. And they feel that the work that we do here in the Northern Neck is very valuable to the success and to what they're looking to achieve.
Gentlemen, you have any questions?
I have just one comment. You said this is a reimbursement grant?
Yes. So we pay upfront, and then the monies, we would submit the paperwork and the reports. It actually would go to our treasurer, who would have to review those reports. She would then hit an approval in the system. They would then forward the monies to the county. The county would send them to us, with no additional monies needed to be added to that.
But y'all have the means to float those grants essentially?
We do at this time, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Bellows? Yes, sir.
I think it's wonderful if the program works. I commend you for trying it, for doing it. But also imagine that if you have success or claim success, and you don't get another grant to continue that, that that will then be added on to the county's expense to keep that program going. Is that an accurate?
I would disagree. These are programs that, we're not starting actually a new program. These are continuation of programs that are bedrock to the Boys and Girls Club. It's pretty much what we'll be asking for is the same programs that we've asked for in previous grants. But when we wrote the one for Kilmarnock, it was central to kids that lived in the Kilmarnock community. So we were covering the project costs associated with kids living in that community. North Umland, the same thing, kids and supporting families from the North Umland community. We want to expand that to all of Lancaster youth, and it will give us the freedom to do more in the programs that we have. Yes, if the funding is not there in '22, after June 2022, we will seek support from the community through our donors. We're not expecting that you increase. We always come to you and ask every February, and we will probably ask again. But just know that we're thankful for what you do, and there's no expectation that you will pick up a $75,000 grant, or whatever the amount may be.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, I move that we partner with the Boys and Girls Club of the Northern Neck and serve as the physical agent for this grant. You've heard the motion. All in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, unanimous vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gill?
Mr. Chairman, your last consideration item comes to you from the school system. Whitney Barrick, the Director of Finance for the schools, has recently received grants in totaling $329,700, and wishes to have those funds appropriated, as she has detailed on her memo. The key point here is that there is no additional local funds required to utilize these grant monies.
All right, any questions?
I move for approval.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote again. All right.
We're getting along really well.
We are.
We're doing well tonight.
All right, board reports.
Mr. Chairman, as I said earlier, I watched the video of the Planning Commission when they discussed the two properties, one of which we voted on tonight. I read the minutes, and it concerned me that the Planning Commission did not forward this proposed change with any recommendation. They forwarded the change of zoning with no recommendation, because they got concerned about what the comprehensive plan says about public access and working waterfronts. So I did, and Mr. Chup mentioned about the Northern Neck Planning District Commission Public Access Authority. So I did some research on that organization, and I agree basically that not very much has been done for Lancaster County through that organization. There were a total of 18 meetings in 12 years, and the net result of all of that is very few public access areas. So I would like to suggest, and actually I'd like to move in a second, but I want to just talk about it first. At first, I thought we should reinvigorate this, our participation in this program, by naming two people to that authority, Public Access Authority. But then I thought, no, that really doesn't seem to work very well, because it encompasses multiple counties, and you've got to get everybody together for the meeting. So why don't we just get some people from the public that are interested in researching what could be possible public access for the county? And the other part of the comprehensive plan was talking about working waterfronts. We have people in this county that are very concerned about having access to the water, because they live internally. They don't have that access. And we have people that are interested historically in the working waterfronts. So I would like to move that we take advantage of what we've said in the strategic. So I would like to move that we take advantage of what we've said in the strategic plan about using the community to help us with this. I would like for us to appoint, or ask for volunteers as a better idea, for however many people the board thinks would be appropriate, and have them research those areas that would be appropriate for public access to the water, and to look at what previous working waterfront properties might be reinstated for that. Now, I don't expect that's going to be happening, that they would be able to meet and come up with something really fast, but it ought to be taken away, in my opinion, taken away from the staff and given to people who care about it, and will go through the process to say, this could be a picnic area, this could be a boat launch, a boat ramp, this could be this or that. There are multiple problems that happen with all of this. The main thing is the road access, and the second thing is adequate parking. And the big elephant in the room is that the neighbors aren't going to want it. So it's going to require someone finding a site, or maybe one we already have, and say, this would be the best use of this site for the entire county, for the people who live on the inside, and we would have the political will to grant that ability for them, and not just be influenced by the people who are neighbors. So that's a long talk, I apologize. But I would like for us to adopt the concept, I suppose, that interested members of the community could be asked to do this project for us, to bring potential places for public access, and how we might reinvigorate the previous working waterfronts. It's still an amorphous thing I'm saying, I apologize, but I really think we ought to do this. We have things written on paper in the comprehensive plan that we don't, we haven't meant, we haven't meant it hard enough that we've been really going for it. Years ago, Fred Adusian, when we were meeting, when the board met downstairs, Fred Adusian brought up the same thing. That might have been 15 years ago, I don't, I don't know, I was there that night, but he said, we're surrounded by water, and we have very few things that the people can use. So anyhow, that's my concept, I don't know how I'd even put it into a motion, but I, I would like to move that we use, advertise for interested citizens, see how many we can find, and, and go from there that would be willing to look into this.
I'd like to make a comment, too. Go ahead.
They want to make some comments.
Because I don't, I don't want to, I want to say this upfront, because I don't want us go doing something, and we have engaged a citizen for the last, what, year? We engaged the person, Bruce Julian, and I told, I said I was going to put his name out here tonight, because he's been working with us on waterfront for the, for the past year, so I don't want us going advertising something, and here we got a citizen that's been, that put in a, a lot of time, a lot of time, and we, real interest, and he said he would work with us.
Well, then he's the first volunteer.
So, so, you know, I want to make sure, you know, we don't want to offend somebody that's put in a lot of time.
No, Bill, he would be the first volunteer. All I'm saying is, rather than us naming somebody, or trying to recruit somebody, if there's somebody out there that has this desire, let's find out who they are. He would be the first one.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure that, you know, we understand that, and he, if he reads something in the paper, you know, we, we haven't excluded him from, from anything, but he, he has been a tremendous amount of help to me, I know it probably to Brian, too, and, and all the research he has done so far in the last 12 months or so.
Why couldn't we essentially sort of create the Lancaster Public Access Authority? And a board member could be, just as we are, all the other commissions and things, be the, basically the board member to that commission, and then set up this committee?
Which basically Mr. Lee has been doing and working on for the last couple of months anyhow.
If I could just say one more thing, I would be careful about an authority, because an authority has the ability to borrow money and to spend money and to do things, it's really not what we're talking about. What I'm talking about is find out all the details that need to be solved, solve as many of those as possible, report regularly to the board about what's going on.
You're basically talking about a community organization.
Yeah, committee, commission.
Wouldn't it be much like an advisory group?
Exactly.
I think this is also a good idea, as we're developing our strategic plan, this is a perfect thing to put into that strategic plan with a goal of what it is and how we're going to accomplish it.
Well, we already have it in general terms, but this would define it.
It would be one of the good goals, because we're getting ready to start developing that plan.
Right, that's right, exactly right.
Works out great. We're getting along again.
You know, and, and that, that could be the motion, that we create a public water access.
Advisory.
Advisory committee.
Advisory committee.
Then if I could, I would move that we do that.
Do you, you want to set a limit on the number of folks?
Let's see how many people are interested. It's possible Bruce Julian knows one or two or three people.
Well, yeah, I, I would, I would say a maximum of five.
I agree.
Yeah, maximum of five.
Too many is.
Yeah, maximum of five.
I agree.
And, and I'll, I'll talk to Bruce, but, because he's, he's put a lot of time in, in research.
Well, and, and the other part of that is, though, it, so I would move that we do that advisory committee, but I would also.
Maximum of five.
Maximum of five. But I would also, as part of that motion, require that they come before the board on a regular basis to report what they have done, what progress they've made. One of the problems with the Northern Neck Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority is they had 18 meetings in 12 years, well, the first 12 meetings happened in the first three years. And there were three, four years when there were no meetings at all, and the last meeting was three years ago. So we want, we want to know what someone's doing, and then if they need our help to do it, we'll, we'll help them. So that's my motion, if you can figure it all out from that. Crystal, it's up to you.
Okay. I think we all understand what the motion is, and, and it's going to be put in written form, so.
Well, yeah, it's to, it's to.
Form a citizen's advisory committee.
Form a citizen's advisory committee for public access and for.
And working waterfronts.
Working waterfront, to be composed of no more than five people, and require that group to report to the Board of Supervisors every two months.
And should we have a board member, one that come in as well?
Sure. Liaison.
Yeah, yeah, it's a liaison.
Yeah. Good.
All right, so you've heard the motion, with the additions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And as well, gentlemen, all right, it's done.
Gentlemen, you know, just so we continue on that, pass this, this is a piece of property that the county already owned, and Bruce Julian, Mr. Barnes, and myself, we visited that property last, this was last week, week before last, and we walked it, and we had some opportunity there to do some things. It's, it's, it's an ideal piece of property. It was given to, given to us, the county, from Ty's Inn back a number of years ago. I think it's 10 acres, 10 acres of property. So we got some opportunity to do some things, Ty's Inn is getting ready to do some things on it, with their piece of it, which is right in front of ours. So I want you all to be aware of it, and, and.
So is it mostly timber, timberland?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, it's, it's not thick timber, it's, it's open in there, so.
It looks parked.
You don't have to go in and clear a lot of things for, for, to make a park area, a picnic area, anything like that. It's big timber, but it's, but it's not a lot of undergrowth in that, as you're saying. And it's going to be an access road put in there anyhow, so we might have some opportunity to do some things if we, you know, stay on top of it.
Good. It's happening already.
All right, good, good, all right, thank you. Any, any other reports from the board?
Did we vote on the motion?
Yes.
We did. We've all caught up in the success of the evening.
All right, county minister to report.
I don't have anything else to add tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, wow, all right. Make sure you tell them about the Facebook page.
Oh, after last month's meeting, we, the county does have a sub-page on the emergency services Facebook link, and Chief Smith, Smith and Bill Farrell have been instrumental in adding items to that, so. And I would also add that the Kilmarnick Refuge Center site has recently been regraded and repaved, and the culvert has been put in at the entrance, and so if you've been there, then no doubt you have noticed the improvements.
Great improvement.
All right. Did you have an update on the building repairs here, Don?
What's that?
Did you have any update on the building repairs here?
I've talked to Karen Hart, well, I'll get to this building in a minute, but I've talked to Karen Hart about the old clerk's office across the road. She said that that roof was damaged several years ago by a, a truck that, when it was pulling out, caught the corner, and it was patched, but it has, the patch has gone bad. And so I told her that we were in the process of trying to either replace or repair much of the slate roof on this building, and, and she said that they would, you know, more than welcome whatever happens here to happen over there as well. And I, you know, we, we, the board approved the replacement of the roof on this building, and the repair of the slate on the wings in the, in the FY 22 capital improvement budget, but we only have one estimate, because people who work in slate are few and far between. We've got the advantage of having a building official, current building official, who has some experience in other localities, and he's got some contacts, I think, with others who, who may be skilled in slate, so Jim is looking at trying to get someone else to look at, at this, and to, you know, maybe give us a second estimate, second opinion.
How much was that estimate that we got?
It was 171,000 for the replacement of this roof on this part, and repairing the two wings. But when we, when we get a second estimate, hopefully maybe a third, we'll include the, the corner of the old clerk's office.
Have we had some considerable leaks, considering we've had all this rain?
We do have some leaks periodically. Karen told me she didn't notice any water damage on the inside of the old clerk's office, but she said that she hadn't been up in the attic either, so.
It looks like to me that that's probably leaking into the soffit, and then probably outside, it would eventually only rot the soffit, but it should be fixed.
Yeah, but we, you know, as I said, people who are skilled in slate work are few and far between, and, and, but we are trying to get an additional estimate or two.
The, we're talking about the past, and you all know that the person who comes to the meeting that wants to hear how we're, how we're using the CARES money, and where that stands, and then additionally, we've got, and I don't remember the acronym for this big chunk of money that we got this year.
Yeah.
But again, if you would, just, I know that our council administrator has been out.
Yeah, well, I, I can, I can bring you up to date, because I, I expected that question. The beginning balance at the beginning of this month was 590,000 and, and change. There were 35,000, $34.79 worth of expenditures on the salaries and invoices attributed to CARES, and what, what that is, is we purchased several air purifiers to go in the courtrooms, the circuit court clerk's office, and the records room at the request of the judge. That's, that's part of the expense, and the, the other part of that 35,000 was for some equipment that the sheriff's office needed that could be attributed under CARES.
Speaking of the records room, is that now open for people to go in there, is it still very tightly controlled by appointments and that sort of thing?
You know, did you?
It's open.
It's open, yeah.
Yeah, you still.
It's open?
Yeah.
You still need to pick your times. If they're busy and they have a bunch of people in there, they might ask you to wait in the hall, but you can now go in without appointment.
Relating to these CARES and, and or S or whatever they're called now, these funds, what is the authorization of county administration authorizing the, say, purchase or use of those funds versus this board making that decision?
I think.
Is there a threshold that we have set, or that you have in mind? Because I don't think that we've ever really discussed that, and.
No.
You said you, the judge requested this, he never came before this board and requested it, he requested it of county administration.
Well, that, that's very true.
Whereas every other entity that's gotten money out of this has come before the board and asked us.
The difference is that they were county departments that have been approved administratively. The items that have come to the board have been outside departments, outside agencies that have requested grants. That's the difference.
Plus, I didn't know judges requested.
Yeah, so the bottom line, the balance right now on the CARES Act, which is the first program, 555,400.
We haven't spent a dime of the million.
We haven't spent a dime of the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Time has left to utilize those funds.
The CARES Act has to be spent by December 31st of this year.
Okay.
The ARPA funds have until '23 or '24, I believe.
And at the end of the day, we can attribute all of those to emergency services at the end of the, at the end of all of this, and not return any of it, correct?
Correct, correct.
But Mr. Larson and I come off the board December 31st, what a coincidence. Maybe we could do something of an emergency nature to celebrate, I'm off the board, look forward, George, and I'm off of the board.
Not spend that kind of money. But what is the balance then on the, the funds, I'm sorry?
On the CARES Act?
No, the other funds.
The ARPA funding was, we received 1 million and I think it was 75,000 and change in, on August the 12th, I believe it was.
And we're not even going to worry about those until the CARES.
No.
Good.
I mean, we should also think about what this money could be used for reasonably, other than just letting it sit there to have a plan.
Caution again, I'm sure they're going to come down and audit, and if they find that we spent money in ways that we weren't supposed to under that legislation, we'll be liable for it.
The million doesn't have that many strings attached to it.
Be creative.
Yeah, the, the ARPA funding has less restrictions than the CARES Act funding.
Yeah, it's all supposed to bankrupt the country, it's not going to do a damn good job of it.
And, and, and we'll get an additional 1 million and 79, 75,000 next year in August from the ARPA funding.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion adjourn, immediate adjourn.